Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, March 1st, 2011. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So, Madam Chair.
We have a motion by Mr. Stamen and a second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. I would like to make the following announcement. The public hearing for the Unified Land Development Code Text Amendment and ordinance by Henry County, Georgia to amend Chapter 7, Section 7.04.04B, signed setbacks and restrictions in accordance with Section 12.02.11 and 12.03.00 of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code has been tabled and will not be heard at this meeting. So if you are here for this particular item, it will be re-advertised for a future meeting. With that being said, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda under Planning and Zoning Services. This is a public hearing, MC-11-02, CVS-8934-GALLC of, I'm not sure, Wound Socket, Rhode Island, request a modification to a zoning condition regarding height and construction design of a primary ground sign for property located at 1806 Highway 81 East in Land Lot 171 of the 7th District. Our presenter is Jeremy Gilbert, Planning and Zoning Exhibit Number Two.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Board Members. The request that is before you today is a modification to eliminate zoning condition number nine of the original rezoning for the CVS Pharmacy located at the corner of South Bethany and Highway 81. Condition number nine reads that the primary ground sign shall consist of a monument base sign that is consistent in design with the primary structure, constructed of bricks, stones, stucco, ephes, or any combination thereof, and shall not exceed eight foot in height. The applicant is requesting that this condition be removed to allow the sign to meet the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance would allow up to 15 feet in height versus the eight feet. I do have a rendering of the proposed sign, and it was passed out to each one of y'all this morning, showing the sign that they are proposing for this location at a 15-foot height. Staff made no recommendation on this request, but I will answer any questions that you have.
Does any board member have a question pertaining to this item? Mr. Holder.
Still, in that particular area, do we have any signs equal to or larger than the current sign that's being requested?
We do, Commissioner Holder. There is the parcel on the opposite corner of South Bethany is a First State Bank, and their sign is 20 feet in height. When it came through under the previous code, they could have went up to 35, and they chose 20. There are some other signs that are 10 to 12 feet in the area, and then there's some signs that are around eight feet in height. But in this particular quadrant, there are some signs that are taller than the 15 feet and some that are equivalent.
Are there any other questions? At this time, I would ask for the applicant or their representative to come forward, and please state your name for the record. You have 15 minutes.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name's Andy Welch, and I'm representing CVS in this modification request. And as you can tell from the sign that you've seen, the design that's been given to you this morning and the one that's in the overhead, this will match the exterior features of the CVS that's being built there. So really, what we've asked for is a modification to that condition of zoning so that it would go from eight feet to 15 feet. All of the parts of the condition would remain in effect. It would still be a monument base sign. It still would reflect the architecture of the main building. So it would be consistent in all those regards. The only difference is that we like the footage to go up from eight feet to 15 feet. And 15 feet would be what's allowed under your current ordinance. And if you recall, at the time when this zoning was done for the South Bethany CVS project, the board was going through the process of coming up with the Unified Land Development Code, and at that time, you were reconsidering your sign requirements. And under the previous code, you could do the pole signs, and you could do them up to 30, 35 feet. That has been completely changed under the ULDC where now everything is monument-based and it is lower. So at that time, we were going through the zoning process. It was typical for the board to place conditions on properties to bring them into a standard that you thought you would probably want to see in your zoning ordinance, and then you did actually adopt a zoning ordinance that reflected that standard with monument-based signage. The only difference is in the ordinance you allow for 15 feet, and we have eight. So we'd like to modify that, allow for 15 feet under this particular zoning condition, and we're almost ready to complete the project. We anticipate that the CO will be, will probably be applying for the CO in the next six weeks. So we're pretty close to being finished. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Does any board member have a question for the applicant? Mr. Holder.
Oh, Mr. Welch, you're talking about in six weeks possibly a CO?
Yes.
And going back to the original zoning, there was a contribution that was discussed about the signal going in.
Yes.
Has that been done?
That has not been done. I believe the conditions of zoning state that we have to contribute $50,000 towards the signalization of the South Bethany Road and 81 Highway interchange prior to the issuance of the CO. And I spoke with my client, CVS. They are fully aware of that. They've made all arrangements for that, and they anticipate to be providing that check to the SPOS Department, to the county, within the next six weeks.
Okay, that's very good. I just didn't want to get it kind of lost, you know, in the shuffle.
No, sir. And as a person that travels through that intersection with regularity, I don't want it lost either.
I understand.
As a taxpayer, so.
I understand, I understand.
No, and that's why I called them this morning, just to make sure that I could tell you that they are aware of it, that I've asked them about it, and that they have communicated back to me this morning that they are perfectly aware of it and making arrangements to make that payment.
So you anticipated that question being asked?
Maybe.
Maybe, yes.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay. If not, since this is a public hearing at this time, I'd like to call if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's request? Well, this one's going to be easy, I'm assuming. If you'd like to come back, board, are there any other questions from the board for the applicant or staff? If not, I guess, Mr. Holder, this sort of split shells district, but I'll look to one of you for a motion.
It actually lies physically in my district. I move to approve, Madam Chair, the request.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder and a second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to finance, the first item is a resolution requesting authorization to deposit and withdraw funds from the local government investment pool. Our presenter is Mike Bush, Finance Director, Exhibit Number Three. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, board members. As you know, a few months ago, we awarded a bid for banking services to SunTrust Bank. And once we did that, the LGIP, or Local Government Investment Pool, sent us a resolution that basically states that they can wire money and receive money from SunTrust Bank on behalf of Henry County. So this is kind of a issue that has to be dealt with every time we change a bank so that our local government pool will accept and release money to our current bank. And that's all this is, is just allowing us to deposit and make withdrawals in and out of the LGIP pool.
Does anyone have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing Henry County to deposit and withdraw funds from the local government investment pool, and I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of an amended Local Policies and Procedures Manual for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Our presenter again is Mr. Mike Bush, Finance Director, Exhibit Number Four.
Good morning again. This Policy and Procedures Manual was adopted in 2009 when we started the NSP program, and there are sections in that document that change each year and have to be updated. And we are here to update that particular document and also show you the changes that were made. There were nine issues that we dealt with in this policy manual, this little blue area, the census tract. We corrected it on this plan. It had some duplication errors in the original plan, so we cleaned that one up. Second thing we did is, under the rehabilitation of houses, it states that we will meet, you know, county and federal codes, and we just wanted to highlight that and show that we will be using Henry County Building Inspectors on final inspection of these houses to make sure we do meet code. The third one that we did is we changed the rehabilitation method. In the original document, we allowed progressive payments to be made, and DCA has, the Department of Community Affairs, who we deal with, and they goes to HUD, they have requested that we do a change to this to where the rehab is completely finished and then payment be made. So we've changed the way we do it, and we're asking for a three-step process where they, when they're 25% through, I think it's 25, it's, yeah, it's 35% through, 75% through, and then completion, that they give us the documentation we need so that by the time we get to the final stage, we're able to reimburse them rather quickly. But we don't want them to wait until the end, and then us have to wait on documentation. We want the documentation as they go and then payment as soon as final inspection has been passed. The fourth issue that we dealt with is the application process. One of the things that happened in the original application process is we had a lot of people come in here and sign up for the program that did not qualify for, you know, financial reasons or whatever. And after a six-week period of no activity, we have to send out a letter and they have to reapply. So what we did this time is we went through and said that, once you qualify for a 30-year fixed-rate mortgage, you come and apply to this program, and that way, we keep only the qualified people coming through the program, save a lot of paperwork that we otherwise were having to do. The fifth change or issue was when somebody qualifies for down payment assistance, the previous manual said that if you moved out of the house before your grace period was up, that you would have to reimburse the county a prorata share of that money. Well, it's 100% of that money. So if you got a $10,000 down payment assistance and you had to live in the house for five years, if you left in three, that $10,000 is due back to this program, 100% of it, not, you know, whatever a prorata portion is. And that's based on the closing statements and all that we've had, you know, all these houses that have been sold so far, that's how it states it. And we just wanted to clean this up to say the same thing that the mortgage documents and all said. The sixth issue that we had is when we did this RFP for all different factions of the NSP program before, we did not sign individual contracts with the vendors. And this program now will have, we will issue an RFP here today or tomorrow for asset managers. And when that RFP comes back for the board and you award the RFP to two or three or whatever number of asset managers we have, they will also sign a contract which mirrors what the RFP says with, you know, all the documentation necessary if there's termination problems or anything else like that. The seventh issue on this manual basically says, if we come out here and do an RFP again for asset managers, instead of having to change this, we will add an appendix which will have any kind of RFPs that were issued so that we don't have to come back in here every time and readopt the whole manual. It would be the appendix that we would be dealing with. Let's see here. The next one, again, basically states, the bottom down here says that a final inspection will be done by county personnel to make sure that we do meet all specifications. The ninth change, and this is the one that will change yearly, this is actually for physical year 2010. We will not get the physical year 2011 numbers until, I think it's April or May is when those numbers come out. And that just, that changes the, if you've got, you know, four-person family, you can qualify with this much income, and five-person family, six, and on like that. And this did change from the original one we had. Each one of them went up by like $500 or something like that. But again, this will be, that's Appendix D, and when we have to change this, we'll just come back in and change, you know, adopt or update Appendix D going forward instead of doing the whole plan. And the final thing is, this is the actual map of Henry County, and the darkened areas or red areas, those are the areas in which we can actually purchase homes in, and I wanted to throw that up there to show it again, that it's probably 65, 70% of the county, you know, we can actually use this NSP dollars for. But you can see, you know, a little bit over here in District 2 and maybe some of 4, and then the east side of the county where District, I guess that's a lot, District 3 and maybe some of 1 near the Ola area, that we cannot buy homes because it doesn't meet the qualifications. Other than that, that's all we've changed. Like I said, we just updated it, corrected some grammar errors, things like that, but we just have to update the saying, this is a living document, and it has to be updated as each year rolls by and changes in the program that happen. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Does anyone have a question, Mr. Alletta?
Mike, I'm your change number eight.
Yes, sir.
Without really going through the other, it says that a final inspection will be made, I believe it says only when requested by the contractor, is that correct?
Right. Once the contractor's finished with the rehab, and that's our asset manager, once he's finished with the rehab and he wants to get paid, he has to request us a final inspection.
Okay. I think, I thought the way this read was that, it almost reads as if he doesn't have to request it. You're saying he does have to request to get reimbursed because?
Right. The only way reimbursement takes place is a final inspection has been passed. If I've got a wording issue, I can fix it before.
I could probably read the other parts before. I just read in the change itself that this says, a final inspection will be made on the unit by the advisor inspector only when it has been requested by the contractor and conducted on assumption that all the work has been completed. So I guess.
Right. They wouldn't call for a final inspection until all rehab has been finished, and that's...
Okay. I was just stopping before that, basically, was wondering if he didn't want to have one, he just didn't ask for it, but he still asked to have one get reimbursed. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, if there are no further questions or comments, you have before you a resolution approving the amendment of the Local Policies and Procedure Manual for the Henry County Neighborhood Stabilization Program in accordance with Georgia DCA requirements, and I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion to approve by Mr. Alletta, second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. The next item is under SPOS. We have a resolution requesting approval of an agreement for professional engineering services for the design of Harris Drive. Our presenter is Rocky Romero, SPOS Transportation Project Director, Exhibit Number Five. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, board members. Harris Drive is a designated SPOS 3 transportation project. A request for proposal for professional engineering service was solicited for the design of this project. Three requests for proposals for professional engineering services were received and reviewed. Staff recommends approval of an agreement of professional engineering services from Wolverton and Associates in the amount of $125,860 for the design of this road. Funding for professional engineering service, it is available in our project budget.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, Mr. Holder, I believe this lies in your district, and I'll look to you for a motion.
I move to approve.
Have a motion to approve, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next item is also under SPOS, a resolution requesting approval of an agreement for professional engineering services for the design of New Hope Road, Exhibit Number Six.
Yes, New Hope Road is also a SPOS 3 transportation project. As well, we requested proposals for professional engineering services were solicited. Four requests for proposals for professional engineering services were received and reviewed. Staff recommends approval for an agreement of professional engineering services from Falcon Design Incorporated for the amount of $92,222 for the design of New Hope Road. Funding for professional engineering services is available in the project budget.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution approving this in the amount of $92,220. And, Mr. Holder, I believe this also lies in your district, and I'll look to you for a motion.
I move to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of an agreement for professional engineering services for the design of State Route 81 at Mount Bethel Road, and that's Exhibit Number Seven.
Yes, as the previous one, this intersection is also a SPOS 3 transportation project. Requests for proposals for professional engineering services were solicited. Three requests for proposals were received and reviewed. Staff recommends approval of the agreement for professional services from Wolverton and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $125,860 for the design of the intersection. Funding is available in the project budget.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holder.
Just a question of Mr. Romero. How do we have two projects that are different in scope, that the design is to the same penny for both projects?
Did I have the wrong call?
$125,860.
I'm sorry. It was $95,000. Got the wrong number there. Sorry for that.
The executive summary is...
Yeah, the executive summary is wrong. Sorry about that.
The resolution is... All right, it's $95,000.
$95,860.
Okay.
I think that 860 got confused.
I was about to tell Falcon that they left some money on the table if we were going to give everybody $125,000 to design these three projects. And I'm sure one of their representatives might pick up on that. I move to approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion to approve in the amount of $95,860, a second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The final item under SPOS is a resolution requesting approval of an agreement with Norfolk Southern Corporation concerning construction of a new railroad bridge for Rock Quarry Road. That's Exhibit Number Eight.
Rock Quarry Road is a designated SPOS 3 transportation project. Henry County proposed to construct a new bridge over the railroad track at the railroad mile post 172.25-H. The existing aggregate crossing located at the railroad mile post 172.28-G, DOT number 718401-M, will be eliminated as a result of the new bridge. Norfolk Southern Corporation agrees to contribute to the project cost a lump sum amount of This is equal to 5% of the estimated cost of the bridge over the tracks. Norfolk Southern Corporation will perform preliminary and construction engineering for the new bridge over the railroad tracks and remove the existing signal and electrical changes. The estimated amount that we're showing on the agreement of $396,100 for the work that Norfolk Southern will perform, as shown on the agreement, needs to be changed. After talking to David Wyatt with Norfolk Southern, he agrees that the flagging services for the estimate of $228,600 can be removed out of this agreement and can be included in our construction contract. The new estimate for the work that Norfolk Southern will perform is $167,000. Since Norfolk Southern already signed the agreement that is, that I have, we have presented here today, we can strike a line if the board approves and put a new amount and initialize that amount, and Norfolk Southern will have to do the same. So I will take any questions that the board may have.
On the resolution, the first whereas shows that Norfolk Southern will contribute $187,500, and then the second whereas, they will perform preliminary and construction engineering in the amount of $167,000.
That's correct.
Okay. Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Bowman?
Just some comments. Rocky and I have actually worked on this too. When Rocky told me what the railroad, Norfolk Southern, had brought to us, we felt like it made more sense to put the flagging in the construction contract as opposed to a just a, these are estimates too, by the way.
They are.
These are not actual. But, I mean, at the end of the day, in contracting business and other businesses, time is money, and the faster you get these projects done, the less it'll cost on the flagging. And if we'd have left it in hours, we'd have paid $228,000. At the end of the day, we'd have had to pay that, whereas the contractor, it'll be competitively bid, and then they have opportunities to work in certain areas where a flagman's not needed.
That's correct.
So then, at the end of the day, they will concentrate their work effort so that when they do have to have a flagman, they will be that, they will be very concentrated. And it, what will, at the end of the day, again, what will happen is, he'll do it for a lot less than that, whereas Henry County would have ended up paying that amount of money. So I appreciate Rocky's working on, bringing it to my attention before this came up so that we had an opportunity to work with Norfolk Southern to make those changes so that it would, in fact, hopefully save us a little bit of money. Now, that other issue that, when we're looking at the budgeted items, there's a project that I share with District 3, and Rocky's, you're going to give me some numbers on that, but I don't need them today.
Okay.
But, you know, so these numbers are not, while these numbers are there, there's contingency efforts on Eagles Landing that we have not exceeded those to date. We still don't know, I mean, there's always changes that come about. So we don't know exactly what this, if this money's going to end. This is just, this is basically a budget. And we want to make sure that we get, number one, we get the bridge in, number two, we've got the shared project between District 3 and District 4. And you and I have already talked about those, so.
Correct, sir.
But with that, Madam Chair, if you're ready for it.
Mr. Stamen.
Rocky, do we, I know this is a little bit different subject, but he brought it up, the campground road extension, the bridge over the railroad tracks, do we know if we got to pay Norfolk Southern for that airspace, or does Mr. Bowman need to help me negotiate that too?
In that case, since there's no crossings, we're just going over, there should be, there should be some costs associated just for the engineering, and of course, there'll be some flagging involved. There will be no money coming back to the county, like on this case. So yes, there'll be some costs associated with, when we build that bridge, but we will not receive anything like we're receiving on this project.
But we should do the same thing.
Yes.
Mr. Stamen, we should put that in the contractors as opposed to having it paid back.
But if you recall, we paid on McDonald Parkway, and we abandoned Ivy Edwards.
Correct.
And there should have been a trade-off there, but there wasn't. We ended up buying that airspace.
Well, we also received some money from Norfolk Southern when we closed the tracks, so I believe it was up around $67,000 in that case.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm just going to throw this comment out there, being naive as I am about these types of projects. I still cannot understand how a train that runs on the ground owns airspace. That just makes no sense to me whatsoever.
Yes.
That a railroad could own airspace is absolutely ridiculous, in my opinion.
Well, it's a wonder, Madam Chair, that they don't charge Delta for flying over, because I think it goes to infinity, so.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think you're right about that.
But that's true. I understand that, and I really, and I agree with you. I think it's kind of one of those federal things, you know, so anyhow.
Well, there's...
He's smiling. Did you want to share, or are you going to keep it to yourself?
I will keep it to myself.
Okay.
I've had issues with some of these people, too.
Well, if there are no further questions or comments, Mr. Bowman, I'll look to you for a motion.
I make a motion to approve as amended.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bowman. Is there a second by Mr. Stamen? All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to the approval of minutes. At this time, we're going to move on to the approval of minutes. And we have, we have quite a few, and we're going to take, we're going to take these separately because Mr. Aletta and Mr. Holmes were not here. We have the minutes from October fourth, fifth, eighteenth, and nineteenth, November first, second, and fifteenth, and December twentieth. These were all regular meeting minutes. We actually got those in our hand about a month ago, had an opportunity to review those and make some grammatical changes to those. And if there are no further changes, I will look to the three board members for a motion to approve. Motion to approve by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries four zero with Aletta and Holmes abstaining. The next set of minutes, December second, twenty-eighth, and thirtieth, two thousand and ten. And if there are, I believe we also had an opportunity to make changes to those. Hopefully y'all got those in, if there were any. And I'll look to the three for a motion. Motion by Mr. Stainey, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. We're going to move on to the next set of minutes, January fourth, eighteenth, February first, and February fourteenth. Also, January the fifteenth, which are all, I'm sorry, February fifteenth. The February fifteenth, we're going to hold off on approving those. Mr. Aletta hasn't had a chance to finish those, so we're going to be looking at January fourth, eighteenth, February first, and February fourteenth. And with that, I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Aletta. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right. Which ones did I miss? Did I miss any of those minutes?
We tabled the fifteenth.
We've tabled the fifteenth. We have a February third called meeting. Is that correct?
You say January eighteenth.
Fifteenth.
Yeah, I said January fourth. Okay, with those, the eighteenth and the third, we had additional called meetings. All right. We have two meetings, January eighteenth and February third, which are the called meeting minutes. And with that, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. And we'll bring the February fifteenth meeting minutes back for the first, the very next meeting of the board. Did anyone sign up for public comment? County manager, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
Upcoming meetings and events, Monday, March fourteenth at nine a.m. and Tuesday, February fifteenth at six-thirty p.m. We have, both of those are regular meetings. Monday, May the second at nine a.m., we have a workshop meeting. And Tuesday, May the third at nine a.m., we have a regular meeting. Do we have any need for an executive session this morning?
No, ma'am.
Shane, we have April meetings?
Yes, we do.
All right, let me, a furlough month, that would be good. Let's look at the calendar and get those dates real quick. Hold on one moment. All right, we're going to have an April fourth meeting, which is a workshop meeting, April fifth, which is a regular meeting, the eighteenth at nine a.m., the nineteenth at six-thirty p.m., and those are both regular board meetings.
Eighteenth and nineteenth?
Eighteenth a.m., nine a.m., and the nineteenth at six-thirty p.m. The fourth and fifth are both nine a.m. meetings. All right, we have no need for an executive session this morning, so if there's no further business to come before this board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Stainey, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. We stand adjourned.